There are some over here, people coming in. Good evening, everybody. Thank you very, very much for attending. My name is Barbara Roach. I'm the local Member of Parliament for Hornsey and Woodgreen, and I'm delighted to welcome you to this meeting. This is the third public meeting that Crouch End for People has called on the subject of the future of Hornsey Town Hall. Once again, we have an absolutely fantastic turnout. Thank you very, very much indeed. Can I also thank very much Reverend Delly here from Christchurch and the Church Wardens for letting us have the use of this beautiful church? Thank you very much, Reverend Delly. Just a couple of very, very quick housekeeping announcements. As far as exits are concerned, just in case we have to get out very quickly, there are two. It's the exit that you just came in from, and there is also an exit at the back. And also Reverend Delly asks me and the Church Wardens ask me if you would please take any literature home with you. I think you'll find it very, very interesting, and not to leave it on the benches at the church would be extremely grateful. This is going to be a different sort of meeting from the meetings that we have held before. We've had a lot of discussion about the Town Hall in the past, its glorious history. Certainly in our first meeting, a lot of people reminisced about what it was like. We saw fantastic film of what had been there in the past, and lots of people from Crouch End also had an opportunity to say how they looked at it today. You'd also have had an opportunity to, at various times, see round the Town Hall. Unprecedented numbers of people have gone round it and have been able to see what an absolutely outstanding building it is and what it could be for the future. And it's the future that this meeting is about. It's about the future. And this is, if you like, the first opportunity for Crouch End for People to present their vision, their vision of what they would like to see in the Town Hall. So it's Crouch End for People's vision of what they would like to see, and that's what they want to present to you this evening. Our first speaker this evening is somebody who has been very active in the campaign, and that is Sarah Montgomery. Many of you will have seen Sarah with the stall on the Broadway, week after week. Sarah, thank you very much. Sarah Montgomery.
On behalf of Crouch End for People, may I say it's absolutely wonderful to see so many of you here tonight, and a very warm welcome to our final public meeting. I say 'final' because next month, on December 21st, Haringey Council will make their final decision on the future of Hornsey Town Hall, either to sell off the entire Town Hall site to a property developer or to hand it back to the community. Throughout the Town Hall campaign, I've been involved in running our stall on the Broadway. It's been fantastic to meet and speak to so many local people as well as visitors to Crouch End, and their encouragement and support has really kept me and the whole campaign going, and it's just got bigger and bigger. But the most amazing thing about this campaign is that it needed to exist in the first place. It's so obvious that we do not want our Town Hall sold off to developers, obvious, that is, to all of us who have signed the petition, and that is over 5,000 people. It's now one year since Crouch End for People was born, founded by residents, friends, and neighbours. We were already fed up with being bombarded by planning applications from developers, or rather, over-developers, intent upon over-developing just about any square foot they could find. And then we discovered that Haringey Council had commissioned leading property consultants, Donaldsons, to dispose of the entire site in the heart of Crouch End, where Hornsey Town Hall stands. We vehemently oppose a Town Hall sell-off, and this almost happened behind our backs. No wonder this campaign needed to exist. We called our first public meeting last October, not only to alert people to the threat of this sell-off, but also to raise awareness about the Town Hall itself and the potential for its future as a community asset. Many people who now support the campaign to reclaim Hornsey Town Hall, myself included, had no idea that this is an award-winning Grade II star-listed building that houses a huge theatre, council chamber, and meeting rooms adorned with original 1930s Art Deco features. The theatre was used for all kinds of performances. Our campaign has brought all this to the attention of the public. At our first public meeting, attended by some 500 people, an overwhelming majority voted in support of three things: to turn Hornsey Town Hall into a cultural and community centre, to open the car parks as a pay-and-display parking facility, and to reclaim the area in front of the Town Hall. If our Town Hall falls into the clutches of developers, it will be lost to us forever. The fate of the Town Halls in Tottenham and Freon Barnet has already been sealed. Our Town Hall is a public building built with public money which should be returned to the community it was intended to serve. We must not be for sale. The people of Crouch End have the right to see the space at the rear of the Town Hall opened up for public use as a pay-and-display car park, providing a source of revenue and making the whole project viable. Council employees have been using the car park for free for years. And who would argue that the public square would not benefit from being transformed into a space we could enjoy, rather than stand with our backs to it while waiting for the W7? Crouch End has it here on a plate. In April of this year, we held our second public meeting, which was packed with 700 people. We asked Haringey Council to work cooperatively with Crouch End for People regarding the handover of the site to the Hornsey Town Hall Trust for the benefit of the community, and the campaign intensified. Ten days later, after months and months of pressure, Haringey Council finally agreed to open the doors of the Town Hall for all to see, and we did our best to let everyone know about it. The queue was huge, over 1,000 people. On this same open day, we organised a party in the piazza with local musicians, a stilt walker, and food stalls, and thousands of residents came. Even the council acknowledged it was a runaway success. The spirit was festive, and you could begin to feel that the Town Hall is our rightful heritage. Under pressure, the council had spruced up the square just days before the event by painting the railings, planting the window boxes, and getting the fountain going. Everyone who went inside the building was shocked to see the way parts of it, in particular the theatre, had been left to rot. The auditorium had become, as one resident put it, "the most elegant store room in London". This piano, the symbol of neglect, ruined because the roof had been left to leak, and no one took it upon themselves to simply move it or cover it over. Haringey Council have left us with a Town Hall to be ashamed of. Within no time after the party in the piazza, we had set up a website and now have over 1,000 email supporters. There were countless articles and letters every week in the local press, and we handed in our petition. By then, already 3,000 signatures. We've produced campaign badges and window stickers and postcards from paintings and illustrations by local artists. Many of you wrote to the council and the local press, and we even made the National Press with a full-page article in The Times, thanks to journalist Valerie Grove, who lives locally and has given us her support from the very beginning. Thank you, Valerie. As an impressive venue, Hornsey Town Hall holds great memories for many and has played host to a variety of special occasions, not least Queen's first-ever gig in 1971. Perhaps one of our most memorable achievements in this campaign was during the summer, when we were fortunate to attract the attention of the BBC's restoration programme. Inspired by our campaign, they came to film us in action, and in July, The Plight of Hornsey Town Hall was broadcast nationwide, and now we have the chance of seeing it again. Thank you.
Residents have rallied together to save their Town Hall from the clutches of developers. Hornsey Town Hall was completed in 1934. A year later, amid much pomp and ceremony, it was officially opened by the Duke of Kent. For almost 60 years, it was not just the seat of local government, but also the focus of social life in Crouch End. But all that ended 15 years ago when its current owners, Haringey Council, closed it to the public.
Around the summer of last year, Crouch End for People learned quite by chance that the council were intending to vacate the building, that they wanted to dispose of the site, and that they had approached a firm of surveyors who specialise in commercial development to market it for them. And this was without any public consultation whatsoever. So we realised then that the future of Hornsey Town Hall was in jeopardy, and we got a campaign to reclaim it underway. Every weekend, we run a campaign stall in the High Street, where we encourage people to come to find out about the campaign, to learn about the Town Hall, what's in store for the Town Hall, and in what way they can make a difference, and we invite people to join Crouch End for People, to support our mandate, and to sign our petition.
Crouch End for People are demanding a say in what happens in their local community. For Sally Kendall, it's a fight which must be won.
This has completely taken over my life, but actually, I feel very compelled. Sometimes I surprise myself by how much passion I feel about the subject, but it has allowed me to experience community on a whole new level.
They've managed to unite a broad spectrum of local people, all passionate to join the fight to save their Town Hall.
We have people from every walk of life who support us. We are friends and neighbours, local residents, the young, the elderly. We benefit from a tremendous skill set: professionals, lawyers, architects, surveyors. We're very fortunate.
I've known this building for, well, actually, all my life, because I went to school up the top of the hill, and I've been living in the area really for the last 20 odd years. So this building is a magnificent building, which really should be used for the public. It's got a theatre in it. We don't have a theatre here. It's a perfect place for the community to be able to act out in.
We feel that it's a special building in the heart of Crouch End. It's a huge site. It was built with public money.
Well, thanks very much. I hope you all enjoyed that, and just to say, we were enormously lucky to get that, and it was a bit of very smart footwork from Sarah and others that ensured that we got that slot, and also that, I think it was in the middle of the week, Sarah, that Crouch End for People were able to put that together. So thank you very much for that. That leads us very neatly on to talk about Hornsey Town Hall Trust Limited, and I'm going to ask Stephen Hoyle to speak to us. Stephen?
You heard a council officer speaking in that documentary, speaking in a very reasonable way. I wouldn't want you to go away tonight thinking that the voice of reason will produce the right result for Hornsey Town Hall. There is a struggle for the future of Hornsey Town Hall, make no mistake about it, and on one side of that struggle, on one side of that conflict, are council officers who control Haringey's money and property. For them, value is determined by balance sheets and profit and loss accounts, and surplus assets are sold in the open market to get the best value, the best commercial deal, because that is the obligation which the law puts upon them unless they choose a different route. On the other side of that struggle is a community vision that says that for a council, the value of property is not determined just by balance sheets and profit and loss accounts. The council is not a listed PLC on the stock exchange. It is there to deliver value and services to you, the community. Often, these council officers exist in relative obscurity. I think it might do no harm tonight to name a few of them. It's good to know who's on the other side. We start with David Warwick, the chief executive of Haringey Council. I and other members of Crouch End for People had the opportunity of meeting Mr Warwick in November 2003, when he lectured us on our trusts. He said, "We do not like trusts. We have one at the top of the hill." I've made this quote before in a previous public meeting. I think it's worth saying it again. His view, I'm sure, has not changed. It will not change. In his empire is Mr Andrew Travers, Director of Finance. In a report of the Director of Finance to the Executive, the inner ruling cabinet of Haringey Council, on the 17th of February 2004, the recommendation you see on the screen was made: a transfer not of part of the site, contrary to what was said in the documentary, but of the whole site, to a commercial developer on a long lease. It is the responsibility of council officers to balance the books, and when surplus land is owned by a council, it is expected of them that they will realise it. And there are two routes for them to do that, which we'll come back to, but one route is simply to auction it. Now, throughout the process in relation to Hornsey Town Hall, it's clear, I think, that council officers have had one choice which has remained their choice. We are indebted to Richard Barrett, who spoke in that documentary for the comment, "Acton Town Hall is our model." This slide has also been up before. Again, I think it's worth putting it up again because this was the model in 2003, and I am convinced it will remain the model. It is a model which involves a long-term development lease being given to the developer in the same style as will be done at Alexandra Palace. It is likely to be a lease that will have no upfront price on it, and it is likely to be a lease which will give Haringey some form of earn-out over time in relation to profits made. A structure of this kind arises by an open-market option under local government law which requires the best price to be obtained. There is no other choice in this route. Therefore, the amount of value that's given back to the community, in this case with Acton Town Hall, it has been specified that there will be a leaseback of some part of the site to deliver certain facilities which Ealing Council wants as part of the commercial deal. It remains overall a commercial deal in which a developer must earn a commercial profit margin on its development of the whole site. You will hear a lot this evening about trusts. We are proposing to you a genuine trust. I warn you to beware counterfeit trusts. You may hear in other places at other times about other kinds of trusts. If this route is followed and there is some partial leaseback of land at Hornsey Town Hall, it could just be leased back to Jarvis, of course, to deliver some kind of community use, or if some council officer thought he was being clever, "Well, we'll not use Jarvis this time. We'll give it to some kind of community trust, and we'll tell them that we gave them a trust, and you will be expected to believe it." As for these council officers who have been their principal advisers throughout, who remain their principal advisers, that is the firm of Donaldsons, who are chartered surveyors, their principal income is from working for commercial developers. Donaldsons made this statement in a report provided to Haringey Council in November 2003: "We anticipate strong demand from both mainstream and more specialist developers in relation to the enabling development land to the rear." They're talking about everything on the site that isn't the Town Hall itself. It is important that the disposal process is not overcomplicated, as this will deter developer interest. So you need to remember that tonight. You must not make life complicated for developers. You have been doing it, and you really must stop. Well, what is the alternative? The alternative is a community vision. It is a vision for the whole site, which will be described to you in some detail by later speakers. It is a community vision which delivers, we think, the things that the public want, but it's for the public to say that, and if it's done in relation to the whole site, it can deliver an endowment for that site which will support it. It is a democratic vision, not democratic on the basis of politicians claiming party political mandates, but democratic on the basis of transparency. You should be given the full information. You should be given choices. You should be given a chance to comment on plans, and the plan that's carried out there should be your plan. And then the people who carry it out for you should be salaried professionals, not developers looking after their balance sheet, and not councillors. And a community vision of this kind will have access to grants which can make up the loss which developer money could provide, but which is not in the plan that we put to you, except to a small extent. A vision like this needs a vehicle, and we have incorporated Hornsey Town Hall Trust Limited. It has been incorporated as a building preservation and community trust, a community trust in the sense of a recreational and educational trust, approved by the charity commissions, seemed very excited about it, approved it in 14 days, which is pretty good going for a charity. It's been approved by the Inland Revenue for Gift Aid. It has an interim group of trustees, two of whom tonight are the main speakers. They are local people. Our vision going forward is that this trust is run by professionals with a couple of councillors to represent the council's interests and local representatives, but predominantly, the future will be secured by your committing the council to a defined plan and then paying for it through the trust to be carried out by salaried professionals. That's the best route. Now, the terms of this transfer, we envisage something totally different from what Richard Barrett envisages. Maybe we're being cheeky, but we anticipate a gift. At no time has any council officer, so far as I know, ever suggested at any point in their planning that the property would be gifted to a trust. It has been done by Hackney in relation to Shoreditch Town Hall. It can be done. There is a process for it, run by the Office of the Deputy Prime Minister, which can relieve a council from its obligation to go through this auction process and can approve the giving of property for community purposes to a trust such as the one we propose. In an open-market auction, a charity cannot compete. It would just never happen. A charity cannot compete against Barclay Homes. You know that, and unless council officers are deflected from an open-market option, a genuine community vision for Hornsey Town Hall is just not possible, whatever other people tell you. It is a vision which must be viable, and I hope when you hear later presentations, you will be satisfied about the viability of the proposal. There is more work to be done. We know that if you really want to know whether something like this works, you don't stop with Donaldsons. You don't even start with Donaldsons. You start with a whole range of consultants who are experienced in this kind of thing, from the South Bank to other Town Hall projects. Those are consultants which other speakers will describe to you. They're consultants who need to report on Hornsey Town Hall and who, I believe, advise that a trust option is truly viable. You will hear proposals for corporate co-venturers in this plan. There is a need for a limited amount of development on the site. There is also a great desire to link up with a cinema operator, because I think the public have a real wish for an independent cinema in that Town Hall. I heard Donaldsons say a cinema was a non-runner. You will hear a cinema operator tonight say something very different. In our structure, Haringey will give a long lease of the entire site to the Hornsey Town Hall Trust, and the trust will sub-lease parts of the site for community purposes, some commercial, some office and workspace. We believe that will prove to be a viable route. What do we need of you? Well, I believe that there is considerable sympathy amongst councillors, actually, for what we are saying. The public needs to be convinced. You need to be convinced, but then the councillors need to be convinced. And there is a point here on practical politics. We're not a party political organisation, and we are not here for any party, but it's a simple fact of life in Haringey, that local politics are in a tremendous state of flux, and you probably have more power than you have had in recent years to influence the political composition of Haringey. Therefore, if you believe and you tell councillors that you believe, I think you'll find that councillors will believe too. Our approach is to try and convince councillors. We will make a presentation individually to all councillors, and we have asked permission to make a presentation to the Executive, the inner ruling cabinet of councillors in Haringey on our proposal, that they're meeting on the 21st of December, when the decision will be made. But you are vital in that process, and we hope in the rest of the presentations this evening to convince you that there is something here really worth supporting. Thank you.
Thank you very, thank you very much, Stephen, and also thank you very much, Sarah, for your earlier presentation. We're now going to have a presentation from Anthony Charnley and Tony Westbrook, who are going to speak about the future, about the vision. So Anthony and Tony.
My name's Tony Westbrook, I'm a charter surveyor, I'm a local resident in Crouch End and have been for some twenty, twenty years. Now, as coincidences have it, I'm also a former partner of Donaldson's, which gives me a slightly interesting perhaps take on, on, on what's going on. But I've also been a developer of a property company and a research director of a subsidiary of Sarchi, Sarchi. I'm currently an independent consultant and surveyor. Okay, well, I've just come back actually from a conference in Manchester with some two thousand property specialists, surveyors, developers and retailers. And one of the speakers there was a little, a little fat Frenchman, P Y Gerbo, and he was talking about the future of the entertainment and leisure industry in the UK, and he said things such as, a destination in his own right, not just a building is the future for the leisure industry, he was talking about having multiple choices of offers and not just a single purpose venue. He was talking, having an offer that encourages repeat visits, twenty visits a year rather than just four visits a year. And this is actually very, very similar to our vision for, for the town hall. And so I thought I'd just start off with, with, with his, with some of his words. And what we're looking for is a vibrant arts and cultural centre to be created in the town hall. So it's not just keeping the public halls open for community use, as the council proposed in a press release that they issued yesterday, I like that, keeping the public halls open, they've been shut for fifteen years. Well, okay, what we want, as I said, is a new vibrant, busy and successful town hall, providing focus for the whole community. And we want to provide space for skills and education as well as the arts, the leisure, entertainment and culture activities. And in a moment, we're going to show you what that, how that vision we think can be made to become a reality. Our vision is very much for a multi-purpose set of uses in, in the town hall. It will include cinemas, a theatre, a multifunctional hall, meeting rooms, some catering leisure, catering and reading facilities, some shops, play areas, work areas, et cetera, et cetera. It's to suit older people, young people, families, ethnic minorities, in fact, for the whole community. We want the building to celebrate diversity and creativity, but it has to be financially viable. And for that, it's going to require good access, it's going to require car parking, just for those people using the hall to be able to access it. We're looking at creating a lasting endowment for both the borough of Haringey and for North London. So, why, why, why are we here this evening? Well, part of it is we need a professional team to help us create the, the arguments for the council to persuade them that the trust can, can go ahead and produce this vision. So why is a professional team needed? Well, part of it is the problem of lack of information. Now, last time there was a public meeting here, Charles Aggie stood where I'm standing now and promised that either books were open and he would explain where this fifteen million figure comes from. Now, none of that has been forthcoming, especially information about the rumored asbestos problem in the town hall. And despite numerous requests, that, that information's been refused and hasn't been put out into the public domain at all. That's just one particular example. So therefore, we're faced with, the only option is to produce, is to bring on board a team of professionals that can help us persuade the council of what needs to be done. Now, the second reason that we need, we need a professional team is that we feel that Donaldson's advice is severely compromised. Now, they advised the council of various options of how to dispose of the site last year, one of which was a free wholesale, which I was interested to see today, or yesterday in this press release, they've now denied that they're, they're going to do a free wholesale, that's, that's fantastic. However, what Donaldson's did recommend was a disposal via a long lease, which is what Stephen was talking about. And the trouble is, Donaldson's actually in that, they, they clearly didn't prefer a trust solution, they have brave reservations about that, and, and I suppose my experience tells me that probably from Donaldson's point of views as, as professionals, that they'll, they'll find it very difficult to go back on that advice now, they'll find it very difficult to change their minds. And I suppose the other point would be that if the town hall was marketed and disposed of on a long lease, Donaldson's would earn some more fees from that, so perhaps they, they might find then difficult as well to, to hand on heart say that they prefer to have a negotiation with, with a trust. So those are the reasons we feel that Donaldson's are not a negoti-, are not a consultant that we can, we can really trust as, as the Hornsey Town Hall Trust. The other reason we need a professional team is the council want a viable future for the town hall complex, this is again what they said in their press release yesterday, and that the trust must show that it has the skills, experience and resources to carry through these projects. And that's another reason that we need therefore to have a serious professional team on our side to explain, to persuade the council that the trust has that, that ability. Right, so the writing's rather small there, but very quickly I'd like to go through some of the names of the, of the team that, that we've been putting together over the last few months. One of the key members would be Civic Regeneration Limited, which is led by a charter surveyor called Robin Knowles, we met him on a number of occasions now, he's worked on a number of similar schemes including Borough Market, the Moonshot in Lewisham, a number of very similar regeneration schemes. In the past, I think he's actually acted as a consultant to Haringey, in fact, in the past, he's very experienced in this sort of thing. We've also talked to a building cost consultant, helped advise us on the building costs involved, very, some numbers which Haringey have not, have not been forthcoming with for us. Garden of the Wild, we've worked on a lot of projects, major leisure projects like Glymborne, the Tate Modern, the Swiss Rebuilding or the, or the Gurkin, as well as in fact the Tally Ho Leisure Centre in Barnet. A theatre designer, as you'll see later, part of our proposal is for a theatre, and Nick Edwards has worked at the RSC on Stratford, so he comes with very, very good credentials, and a theatre planner, who are theatre equipment designers, who've worked on a number of major buildings, including the Kiwi Hall, Royal Academy of Music, et cetera. We believe that catering is a vital part of the, the component of mix at the town hall, and we've, we wish to appoint Winter Knight to be our catering consultant, and they've agreed to help us. We've had a man called John Van Hage as a landscape designer, and he's, he's a gold medal winner from Chelsea. Also, some of you may remember the Secret Life of Machines, a man called Tim Hunkin, he's come on board with us as a, to help us design a brand new fountain in, in the public square. Services engineers, Max Fordham Partners, works on the RIB HQ in the Hackney Empire, and a structural engineer, local structural engineer, David Bell, who's, who knows the building for many years and knows the structure of the building. And as part of our professional team, we want a transport study done to look at the need for car parking and, and public transport, and Giffordham Partners have agreed to help us there. However, this does come at a cost, and we've estimated that in order to put the presentations to council by the end of, by, by December, this will cost something like fifteen thousand pounds in fees. Okay, one of the things that we think is very important are, are cinemas, and we've done a lot of work in, in the last few months looking at, at the potential for cinemas in the town hall. And what we've established is there is a very strong demand for cinemas in, in Crouch End, in this location, and that a layout with three cinema screens is perfectly feasible, and you'll see that layout a bit later. And the sort of idea we have is that it should be a sort of art house concept as, as well as just showing main screen films, so it would be something a little bit different, an independent type of cinema operator. And what I can tell you tonight, we have had very strong demand from experienced operators. What I'd like to do now is hand over the stage for two or three minutes to, to Tony Jones. Now, Tony Jones is a director of City Screen Limited, who, who operates some, I think now almost twenty, twenty, twenty cinemas around the UK. And so, Tony, would you like to come up and just say a few words? And I hope what he'll do is persuade you that cinemas are not a dream, they could be a reality in the town hall. Tony.
Thank you. City Screen has long been supporters of the town hall project. From discussions with Revolution Films, that's Michael Winterbottom and Andrew Eaton, some two to three years ago, we believed the town hall would provide a very important cinema provision in the borough. Conversion of the balcony and a committee room could provide three screens. City Screen's first cinema development was a conversion some ten years ago of an old building in Clapham. It was a derelict snooker hall and formerly a cinema, and it had a history in between during the wars as a clothing factory. We took that site on in an area which was quite rundown, and it's been highlighted as an excellent example of urban regeneration. Its success led to an additional fourth screen added three years ago, and here's one of the, one of City Screen's main, main revenue earners, and not a drain on the community at all, it's actually well, well liked, well loved, and actually it's, it's one of our key sites. City Screen would programme a wide range of film titles at the town hall, specialised independent art house and quality crossover and commercial titles. So in addition to this eclectic programme, would encourage local filmmaker use and community use, and take the opportunity of the soon to be introduced, the introduction of high definition digital equipment, which is pioneered and funded by the UK Film Council. We hope the scheme succeeds.
And I think that, I hope, persuades you that cinemas are, are a reality and that they're a firm part and a viable part of, of, of the proposals. As part of the cinemas, there'd also be an ancillary bar and restaurant operation to help support the cinema, and I, I think it's also absolutely critical that there's some car parking in, in, involved in the site to help support the cinemas. As we know, most of us know, in Mazwell Hill, there's a large car park right behind the cinemas in Mazwell Hill, and when recently they tried to look at the development option to the council, they said, oh, no, you must have car parks associated with these cinemas, you can't not have, have a car park. Okay. I'd like to hand over to Anthony Charnley, and he's going to take you through some of the detailed proposals for the site, which we've been working on. So, Anthony.
Anthony, just before you speak, I know there are some people who came in and are standing up, there, there are some seats over here, if you'd, if you'd like, if you'd like a seat, just want to come through now.
Thank you very much, Tony. I've got a, a large number of slides to get through, and I'll be talking to them, it will be going quite fast, but there's quite a lot of visuals to get on the screen. I'm a, my name's Anthony Charnley, a, a local architect, I've been living in the area for over twenty years now, and I have an ex, a considerable experience in large buildings, going back over twenty-five years. I've dealt with grade-two star listed buildings of considerable size, I've also dealt with town halls as far away as Holland. I'd like to talk to you tonight about the importance of mixed use in the site, the rich mix of uses. This is the key to the site, and it's the key to the economy of the site, the local economy of the site. We need to get people there, we need to get people in there enjoying themselves, doing things and contributing to this community vision. Here we have a, a use diagram of the site, which broadly, broadly coincides topographical arrangement on the site. You see the public space down the front, you'll see the existing buildings of the assembly portion of town hall administration, the library. Now, here are some uses that these various things could, could have, and also we look at the, the other uses that we could bring to the party to make this rich mix really work. We have retail round the public space, but not just where there's shops at the moment, we have the back of Barclays perhaps that could come into the frame, we've got the forward projecting front wing of the town hall, and we've also got the customer services department of Haringey at the back of Powerhouse, plus we also have a muse behind that. The key to all this retail, I think, is having a reasonable parking provision at the back of the site. There's only forty pan display spaces behind Budgeons at the moment, and we all know if you, if you have, need to pick up a large item from the shops, or you want to take a large number of children to the shops, you need somewhere to park your car. This isn't to say that everyone should leap in their cars and head down to Crouch End, it's just a fact of reality that people need a choice when they're going about their everyday life in Crouch End. Also, in, in the frame, you'll see the library and the importance, I think, of the library joining the party with a, a rear front, a rear door, so that people can, there's a, there's a strong potential link in the future, I believe, between the two buildings. Also, there needs to be a way, the existing town hall forms a big wall across the site, what with the Hadley Gardens residential scheme and also the, the whole frontage, it's impossible to get from the front to the back of the site without walking all around to the library. So some form of public route through between front and back is, is absolutely vital to the success of our vision. And then finally, there's what I've called growth, which is, both growth, as Tony outlined, may be necessary to fund our vision, and we hope, the trust hopes certainly by the provision of grant funding that, that may not be necessary, but also if the town hall is, and we know it is going to be successful, then it'll need room to expand in the future, and that needs to be thought of now rather than later. So the rich mix of uses is the recipe for the success of the town hall. Now, I want now to move on to the council's vision about uses, because the supplementary, supplementary planning guidance document, which is, you may have heard later about it through your door recently, is all about uses, and it's about the development brief for the site. The council produced a development brief back in February this year, and this was also augmented by a, a very grand conservation plan for the building done by Alan Baxter and Associates. And it's a very thoroughly researched document, though there are aspects related to the back of the site which I, I feel shouldn't be in there because the, the setting of the site should be maintained rather than left open for development as the conservation plan indicated it might be. Now, these, these documents have been superseded by the supplementary planning guidance document, which is what the consultation is about, and this consultation goes through till November the fourteenth, so you have to, if you have views about it, and I all hope you have, you need to get your, your comments in quickly, and there'll be a piece later about some ideas to, maybe to do that. The first thing that comes, that I noticed on opening the document was that they'd reduced the size of the site. Originally it was some three point nine nine acres, and they've, by locking off the Hadley Gardens Citizens Advice Bureau, which is to be included within the town hall, it's been reduced by twenty percent. Now, concentrating on the main building first, there was always ideas for live, live work units in there, as in Hawkins brand scheme, or auction studies that were done, but now this has been condensed to non-family accommodation. And the picture on the right shows Barrett Homes' vision of non-family accommodation in Frearn Barnet Town Hall, which is currently marketing, is covered with posters and hoardings and all sorts of other paraphernalia of the private sector. Next, please. The large building to the left, perhaps, as you look at the town hall, is called the Broadway Annex. The rear of that building, showing on the right, is the customer, Haringey Customer Services Department, and now in the SBG, we learn that's to stay put. Having previously said that the site had vacant possession, we're now told that that particularly used is staying put. I, I would question that and ask why can't it sensibly put inside the town hall if that's where customer services and citizens advice should be, in, in the heart of town hall for which it was built. We also stipulate office use on the first floor and no other alternatives. If we're considering residential, why not let... If we're considering residential, why not let's look at residential out there? I mean, it would be very useful to have flats overlooking the square at night to stop people vandalising the fountain, as was put to me by the fountain designer who's worried about his creation being misused. And we also have the muse development behind the Powerhouse Building. Now, you'll see Crossbury's books there on the right, and you'll see there's a little ginnel up there. Now, if there was a two-storey building at the end of it with shops or cafes or restaurants, there's a larger area to the left which is including the site which could be used for retail, and there could be an arcade linking it through to the back of the main square. So that would bring a whole little area of Crouch End, an intimate area of Crouch End, back into the frame and make the place even livelier. It's a wasted opportunity if, as the council suggests, it should be workspace or live-work only. Next, please. And finally, we have the rear car park. Now, here's an aerial view taken of the car park with the boundary of the site shown in red, is viewed actually from the other side, so that's why you probably won't need to orient yourself, orientate yourself there. But you'll see a lot of cars parked there, in fact, I counted them, and there's about 100 cars there. And we think that, I'll show you drawings in a moment, show that 100 cars is probably a reasonable level of provision to keep on the site. After all, this is an existing use in a conservation area, and we think it should stay at that use, we don't say you need to change it, unless the need can be proven otherwise. Next, please. And finally, coming on to the rear land, the council consider appropriate future uses, and the main one clearly being residential, and the stipulations for 50% affordable, which to pay for it means 50% luxury on the other remaining 50%. These are views of housing developments of a similar kind of scale that we believe has been proposed in Wood Green. Next. And this is, these visual diagrams put in the development brief for February, I don't think have changed much in terms of what I can see in the current SPG. On the left, we have the existing land use, which is the large purple shape of a Town Hall site, and on the right, coloured yellow or creamy yellow, is residential in the proposed land uses by Donaldson's. And it should also be stated that Town Hall itself or large parts of it could become residential, so we'll have a complete residential land use on the site, which is not the rich mix of uses that I think the site needs. Next, please. And finally, we have the minutes of the 9th September advisory panel meeting. Donaldson's were asked to report back on the viability of the site, and they reported several options, a third of which proposed the construction of a larger number of housing units, and it was the only option that they consider, which is able to fund general refurbishment works and finance ongoing running costs to the Town Hall. Notice at the bottom there, they said they did not include possible grant funding. Now, we believe that there is potential for some 50 to 60%, even more grant funding if we go about it in the right way, with the right plan, the right experts, and the right ideas. Now, finally, I come to the UDP, which is another planning document produced by Haringey, this has been recently completely revised, and it's at consultation, consultation period's just finished. And the SPG for parking standards for public halls has been dropped, they now, it's now open season on parking on public halls, and the only stipulation is that the proposal will be backed up with a transport assessment. Now, it makes no mention of the Mayor of London's earlier utterances on the subject, which was there should be one space per five to 10 seats for theatres and cinemas depending on the accessibility of local transport, and you may be aware that Crouch End has a low-to-medium public transport accessibility rating. Also, in the UDP, residential densities have been substantially increased, and this is the low-to-medium public transport accessibility map, and Crouch End is that little green blob, which is medium, and the rest of it's pearl blue, which is low, and dark blue is very low. Next, please. This curtative Sarah McMenamy is a view of how the piazza might look of an evening when we're all going to a wonderful entertainment in the Town Hall. And you notice that the ground floor of the Broadway Annex has suddenly sprung to life with shops and an arcade leading through to the muse behind. And we've also been challenged by the notion of putting signage on the building, which English Heritage probably wouldn't allow, so we'll have to think of imaginative ways of getting people aware of what's going on in the building, but we will get there, I know we will. Next, please. So, come to the, what are we going to do in the main halls? Well, the main thing is, I think, as Tony explained earlier, is this need to get, by get people coming back and coming back, and the way to do that is give them variety. Variety not in variety shows, but variety in terms of a choice of things to come and do and see of an evening in the Town Hall. The building originally seated, the main hall seated 1,200 people, now, you'd be hard pushed to get 1,200 people out of an evening, except perhaps for a rock concert by a national band, and I don't think the residents of Westford Park would be very happy about that every evening. So, we feel that in order to regenerate the building, which we all agreed on, we need to subdivide the auditorium, unfortunate though it is, and Crouch End people, sorry, Crouch End Chorus, sorry, can, will certainly be invited to come and perform, but they are only committed to a few nights a year anyway, so I think that's, you know, something we just have to live with. The main hall, we think, can have a seating capacity of 200 to 250 with six understanding for prongs, studio hall downstairs, I'll come to in a moment, cinemas we've just discussed, I'll give you more drawings of those, and the wonderful idea that Tony's brought to the party, mobile digital projection, which can be used in any of the large spaces in the building, technically feasible to do so. Next, please. So here, here's a cross-section of the building, these are based on the architect's original working drawings, so they should be pretty accurate, and they certainly give a lot of detail about the innards of the building. You'll see the main hall with its enormous ceiling height, you'll see the cinemas up on the gallery, you'll see a bar lounge underneath, which is what is often called a performance bar, and also hopefully serve some food, the entrance foyer, which we want to really celebrate, and the studio theatre in the lower ground area. Now, in order to optimise the use of the main hall, we went to see a couple of successful facilities in their own right of a similar size and scale, and the two we went to see were very impressed was the LSO in Old Street, which is what used not only for orchestral performances and rehearsals, but also a wide range of community uses, and the Town Hall, it's a listed building adjacent to the Swan Theatre in High Wycombe. And that has, again, a variety of different formats it is configurable to. The multipurpose has to mean a whole variety of things, but the main bread and butter use is in the daytime, you know, we're talking about an eight-hour day perhaps, and if you can get orchestras coming there performing, rehearsing, you know, two stents a day, well that's an enormous income earner for the building. Not only orchestras, dance and drama can also rehearse in there, and we can also do more commercial things like fairs or conferences or functions, weddings and the like. But the important thing is rapid reconfiguration, so that evening uses can then take place for the performances we've discussed. Key to this is the acoustics, and we're told by the Nicovitzli theatre designer that the acoustics are very reasonable in there, although they, we need to make them variable by use of drapes or blinds, and also important is isolating from other uses, both cinemas within and also the exterior traffic noise outside. And the flat floor is the perfect, the existing dance, sprung dance floor, is the perfect flat floor medium for flexibility, and we also need a range of expansive art equipment to make this flexibility sing. So, this is what it's like at the moment, and this is what we'd like it to be like, and I see no reason, given that we do all the right things, that it shouldn't be like this again. Here's next initial scheme for the, showing how an orchestra would perform to an audience about 200. We also think that there's a potential for galleries, there's certainly a control gallery. If you'll see on the right, there's a control gallery for the sound equipment, and there's no reason why the gallery shouldn't extend with English Heritage's permission round the side to animate the auditorium walls, rows of faces round at first floor level. And you'll see ambitious designs for stage equipment at the forefront of the stage to enable different configurations and tiering of the stage. And the stage itself, we're looking at ideas to enable large objects to be got in and out quickly by keeping it all at one level, but that is a technical area, I won't go into too much. Next. The, moving downstairs to the area under the foyer, the main hall has been criticised as too tall for intimate drama performances, it might be okay for a theatre season once a year, where we can do something about that, but normally, we want a lot more frequent drama based on the more intimate setting, and we think the small hall downstairs is ideal for that. It has low headroom at the moment, but a wide variety of groups and schools need space, and it's also close to the kitchens, so, you know, that has potential there as well as problems. The solution, we believe, is to excavate underneath a small amount below. This is a plan, showing the plan at the moment, where the, if you go on a tour, by the way, it looks tiny down there, because it's all, these two side wings are all filled out with stuff and lockers, and it actually is quite a large space, and can seat 200 people. And in section here, you see the idea of an orchestra pit, if you like, in front of the stage, and raised roster at the rear, so you can create a rate, and then use the roster to fill up the hole to make it flat again fairly rapidly. The cinemas, Tony's already, the two Tonys have already covered all the demand issues, two halves, or maybe both the two halves, this is a sensitive subject that needs further work and discussion, of the wonderful panel committee rooms, as a kind of club cinema concept. And someone could share the main foyer with the, to one side, perhaps using existing cloakroom for box. I had ideas whereby we might consider making this, these three large doors at the back of the main square the main entrance to the whole building, so that it concentrates all the traffic through that area. There's also the brave idea of converting the toilets into a sort of a public toilet use, so that rather than having the current, what some, a friend of mine referred to as prison toilets in Hadley Gardens, we actually have some really nice toilets which are properly managed and maintained. I've moved to the main body of the Town Hall, 40,000 square feet offices is it, it's a large, large building, and we know that there's, people are crying out for, to actually rent and take space in this, in this building. It also, it also has the wonderful council chamber and a large number of very fine panelled rooms. I've already mentioned the Citizens' Advice Bureau and the Customer Service Office, there's also arts and education groups who want space, voluntary bodies and small businesses, artists and craft people. Currently, 250 people work in that building, and we want those 250 people to stay, we don't want there to be a, any period where there's a vacuum there, we want them to move out, we want 250 new people to move in. The only place where that won't be possible is in the area of the council chamber where substantial refurbishment work is required. I'll go on to that now. There's the wall fabric of the council chamber, which was put in for acoustic reasons when it was built, that has asbestos behind the fabric, it needs to be stripped off under controlled conditions. Also, the seating to the chamber needs to be refurbished, but once those two processes are complete, there's no reason why it shouldn't be brought back into use with the adjunct digital projection for debates, registry office, weddings, committee rooms, education, and we can have the work of local artists on the walls, as we can throughout, on all these wonderful corridors throughout the Town Hall. Right, move on to the front of the site, the main square. The key thing, as I've discussed earlier, is linking the front to the back, and we think there's an opportunity to the right of the main door into the administration block under the tower, to create a linking passageway through there with English Heritage's permission. And that will then immediately create this through space that I think is so important to the site, and give people a range of routes to go about their business, to walk to the town centre, to go shopping, you know, to enjoy the building. It'll also get a lot of people actually walking past the Town Hall, which they don't do at the moment, and I think it's that footfall, it's that passing traffic which is so important to getting people in there and getting the thing used. We've talked about the retail units and the arcade, and there's also the need to repave the Town Hall properly, the square properly, and do a wonderful thing to the fountain, of which we've had several ideas already and which will come to fruition shortly. Finally, there's the rear, and all the operators we've talked to, all the users of space, whether the educational, drama, arts, but they all say we need parking, you know, we don't want everyone, people won't all come by car, but probably maybe a third, maybe less, but the kind of, the rate of one space per five seats is not a high parking provision by any stretch of the imagination, and I think anybody who knows Crouch End will realise that that's a reasonable statement to make. And it would be entirely in accordance with the mayor's standards. So, the layout on the right shows how you could sensibly accommodate 100 cars in the space and have space over for new development of some form as well. And you'll notice some large trees down in the left, bottom left-hand corner, those are two fine, of the right-hand drawing, that those are two fine specimens willow trees, which we would work around and keep. And also, there's a new rear entrance to the library just below them, which I think would be a great added bonus for the library. The whole of that rear piazza could be used on Sundays for fairs, and there's also the idea of a skateboard park for kids, which I think would take the pressure off the front of the square a bit. And finally, I come to the clinic, which is a small building, a little gem tucked away in the corner of the site. We've had people falling over to get into this building to put in soft play, convert it as an art gallery, funds permitting. We think we might need to have a colony of artists in the building first to enable that to happen, but then again, it could always be used as additional workspace as it is at the moment, as an adjunct to Town Hall. And we've talked about the professional team, just some of the buildings that we've all been responsible for. The R O B A headquarters is a very interesting building in the sense it was built, it's completed a year later than Horssey Town Hall, it has an identical heating system, and the engineer involved, service engineer tells me that it's all the ductwork in it, it's compromised asbestos gas gets in all the ducts. The outcome, a technically proven design, fully flexible, optimising the reuse of the building as much as possible, where we need to, imaginative new elements, but they've got to be integrated with existing fabric, they don't want to stand out like chalk and cheese, we want an integrated approach, not a Slavish pastiche, but something that picks up on the messages of the past and the messages of the future, in the sense that the building was very forward-looking. Efficient and sustainable use of energy resources, Max Ford and Partners are particular authorities on that. Costings, accurate building costings with the authority of Gardens Theobald, who have probably the most, they produce a leaflet every month which is used by the construction industry with tender indices. A business plan created by Robert Knowles, backed with his wide experience of similar regeneration projects, and a proven transport planning document to show that our transport assessment will work and not overload the local road network. And finally, Donaldson's in the November 2003 assessment of trust, said trust has to be skilled and motivated enough to take a proactive development role. I hope that the presentation tonight will convince you that we are the people to do the job for you. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Anthony, I mean, that was a real tour de force, we're really grateful. I said right at the beginning that this was going to be a different meeting from what we had before, and the idea was to share with you the vision, and as you've been able to see, just an enormous amount of work has gone into this. Thank you also very, very much for, you know, your patience, but what we wanted to do was to take you through the detail, the vision, to see what we could have in the very heart of our community, and thank you very, very much, Anthony and Tony, for that, it was really absolutely fantastic. I'd now like to ask Stephen Moore-Purgo and Sally Kendall to speak to us, and I think it's Stephen first of all.
Good evening, and thank you again to both of the Tonys, or three of the Tonys I should say, it was absolutely fantastic. It really is impossible to convey the amount of work that has taken place over the last six months to come six months to come to that sort of very short presentation which was flashed through there, but there's a huge amount of technical expertise backing this vision, this concept. At the end of the meeting, you're all welcome to stay, all of you, if you want, and grill the two Tonys in more detail, they'll be delighted to answer any questions you may have. While I'm thanking people, the Tonys, I'd also like to thank again Reverend Dele and Peter for all the work they do in letting us use this church, and Barbara, because she's been such a constant companion over this last year, I really appreciate that, thank you very much. I'm sure you all appreciate now the sort of very difficult situation that we face here, the councils have basically forced us down this route, almost in effect having to bid for our own town hall. And despite our continued efforts to stress that we want to work with them cooperatively, and that we have more than 5,000 people who've signed a mandate and want this vision to take place, most of the time, Haringey Council has chosen to ignore us. Just yesterday, in anticipation of this public meeting, Haringey Council issued this press release, many of you may have seen it, they have barely begun their consultation process, and yet they are claiming to have a shared vision with local people to safeguard Hornsey Town Hall for Crouch End, for Haringey, and for North London. This is not the shared vision that over 5,000 of you have supported. Their vision will see the car park surrendered to developers for high-density luxury flats and with more residential live-work units built inside the town hall itself. To the contrary, this vision would not safeguard the town hall for the benefit of the community at all. And I'd just like to remind you, it's already been done several times tonight, the documents go back years where there are proposals for the reuse and development opportunities from a developer's perspective, that the council seeks a transfer of the town hall to a commercial developer on a long lease, bring forward proposals for the disposal of the town hall complex on a freehold or long lease basis to a commercial operator, it goes on and on and on. So as Stephen Hall also pointed out, you have to be very wary. It is, a big problem, Haringey Council's town hall public meeting, public consultation will be completed by the 15th of November. This is your only opportunity to say what you want for the town hall, and this time they are obliged to listen. Tonight, we have put on your chairs a copy of the council's consultation form, as most people will not have received one from Haringey itself. We've already started getting emails coming in from people who live in Crouch Hall Road and various other, very local roads, complaining that they have not received any documentation from Haringey. I also have not received anything, I live in Burchington Road, which is near enough to be consulted, and in fact, of all the people I know here, there's only one person who'd received a copy of this form through his letterbox, and he lives halfway up Fernpark Road. Of course, you know, at first glance, this document will lead you to believe that they share our vision. Who isn't going to strongly agree to protect the character of the town hall, it's wonderfully worded, or to improve the area around the building to the public square? But beware, this document is misleading. We believe that Haringey Council is still trying to sell the whole site to a developer, and they want you to agree to the sale of the car park for high-density residential and commercial use. It is imperative that we do not allow this to happen through any misunderstanding. We must tell Haringey that we strongly disagree to the development of the car park. Building high-density luxury residential housing without the social infrastructure such as GP and school places will cause a crisis within Crouch End. If the town hall is to be an economic success, and again, I reiterate, the work that has been done here I think proves that it can be, it will rely on the custom of visitors who, many of them, are likely to need a car park. Crouch End has poor transport links, we have no tube station. Ken Livingstone, the Mayor of London's official parking guidelines for public venues state that a car park the size of the town hall car park would be necessary for such a venue. Whilst we all wish to minimise the use of the car and to encourage walking and cycling, we do not want to see the town hall fail because visitors could not be accommodated. We need to encourage people to visit, to support local traders, and remember, a pay and display car park could bring in a regular revenue stream direct to the town hall itself. Informing the council that you disagree with the development of the car park indicates that you do not want them to hand over the site to a developer, whose motivation will be profit and not community needs. On the consultation form, the council have invited you to add what they think they have missed. In the two spaces provided at the bottom of the grid, we invite you to add that you want to see the creation of a cultural and community centre, including cinema, and to see the town hall car parks open for pay and display, and to see the piazza reclaimed, and that the site as a whole should be handed over to the Hornsey Town Hall Trust Limited. You should tick the strongly agree boxes to indicate that you agree with these points. You can hand in the completed forms at the back table before you leave, and we will pass them on to the council before the 15th of November. Thank you.
Thanks. This campaign has been exceptional because everything we have accomplished has been through the gift of people's talents, time, energy and commitment. The Crouch End for People steering group have worked tirelessly and voluntarily on this campaign for over a year, and all expenses totaling thousands have been met by this group all through the generosity of local sponsors such as Budgens, Duns and Winkworths. It would take too long to mention everyone by name, but it is the personal contributions of so many local people that has made this campaign possible. The website, the weekly store, the artwork and merchandising, the party in the piazza, the musicians, entertainers, the public meetings, the sound equipment, the leaflet distributors who have delivered over 30,000 leaflets so far. All this, together with the professional expertise of our marketing team, surveyors, architects and our lawyer, without whom absolutely none of this would have been achieved. They have not charged for their time or costs, believing as we all do that the future lies with the community and not the developer. Our sincerest thanks to you all. Our vision is outstanding, our professionalism first class, and our motivation to see it through has never been stronger. It is outrageous, but we must now bid for our own town hall. A professional bid must present more than just a vision, we must present a plan that is supported by detail, technical expertise and accurate costings. At our second public meeting last April, councillor Ajay, leader of Haringey Council, stood right here and promised that the books were open to us, and yet today, important financial documents are still being withheld from the public. And we have done all that we can, and now rely on the experience and technical skill of the professional team to develop, oversee and deliver our plan to its fullest potential. This team will provide quality, credibility and accurate costings that will maximise our chances of success. For this professional team, we need to pay. Technical expertise is costly, and we are fortunate that much of the work has been offered to us at a greatly reduced price. Despite this, the cost is still £15,000. Our only resort is to ask you personally to contribute financially to the Hornsey Town Hall Trust plan to allow us to complete the bid. This is your chance to pay your most important part in the future of your town hall. Our need for funds is urgent, time is running out for us and for the town hall. We have a unique opportunity to demonstrate that our plan is viable, but without your help, this could pass us by. There will be no second chances, it really is now or never. After the council's decision in December, there will be no going back. Raising this money will not guarantee success, but without it, we are in danger of losing our town hall. This is a conflict we did not choose, but we can win. None of us want to wake up the morning after the council have railroaded a wrongful decision to sell the site and know that we could have done more. So tonight, please give whatever you feel you can and help us win. Here are the different ways you can make your donation, by cash or cheque, by credit card or by making a pledge tonight. Gift aid envelopes and pledge forms are available from our fighting fund tables which are at the side of the church currently, behind the screen. Also, you or someone you know of who could not be here tonight can make your donation via the internet, through the Hornsey Town Hall Trust website at www.hornsetownhall.org. And finally, some memories of Crouch End, both past and present, and of how our campaign first began, just over a year ago.
Thanks very much, it's a fantastic film, I never tire of seeing it, it's absolutely wonderful. Can I just thank you very much for coming, thank you so much for staying the course, for sharing the vision with us. Can I thank everybody on the platform, everybody like Sally and Sarah and others who've organised it. Can I thank our production team there, Amit or Bobby?
Yeah!
Andy and others, Tony who's come along, really, really grateful to you. Can I remind you about the tables over there for the fund? Can I also say that we're here, we're staying behind, please do come up and speak to Anthony and Tony, they're here to answer all your questions in detail. But if you can just go away with one thought, after hearing about this evening and about what is possible, and looking at that film, everything is possible for people who live in this area, we can do it, we can do it by working together, that's the vision, thank you very much for sharing it with us this evening.